Just so you know, if I'm looking to my right or to your left, I'm looking at my other computer. So it's not trying to ignore you. So.
Good to know. All right. So I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. It is 6:06 PM on Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Roll call. We'll go ahead. Jim Bryant.
Present.
Mike Christensen.
Here.
Heidi. Heidi Jones. Holly Tower.
Here.
Janie Fair.
Present.
Arlen Derrickx.
Here.
Pam Rose here. Karsten Anderson.
I'm here.
Okay, we are all present. We'll go ahead and stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public which stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And I'll read our mission statement. The mission of the Red Wing Public Schools is to educate and inspire all students as they realize their full potential and become respectful, responsible, and productive citizens. So you have or should have the agenda in front of you. We have a workshop item tonight, "Fostering the Curiosity: Embracing Diversity", by Kim, Cory, and Emily Seifelt. Do we have any additions or changes to the agenda tonight? Nobody?
That's it.
Okay, seeing no changes, then I will turn it over to you, Carson, if you want to say anything prior to the presentation.
Sure. And I'll just briefly introduce it. You know, one of our educational plan components was to focus on social-emotional learning to improve school climate and student discipline throughout the district. It's a five-year referendum effort. But as part of that effort, we did hire Kim Cory and Emily Seifelt as Positive Behavior Intervention Support Coaches. Those titles next year will be teaching and learning coaches. And they are not responsible for, you know, the overall school climate or student discipline within the school district. That rests with the principals and myself, but they have a unique perspective and have made huge contributions this year to our efforts. And so when the topic came up for Board Workshop, I thought, let's invite Kim and Emily to talk about what's happened this year and what we hope to do next. So Kim and Emily, can you take it from here?
Yes. Are you presenting?
I will, yep. It's gonna be interesting since Emily and I aren't next to each other, so I'm gonna present my screen if I can. I think you all got a copy of the of the slides. Is that correct?
Yep, yes.
And then I'm gonna just try to present in presentation mode. Can you see my screen? Okay?
It's coming.
Okay.
Great.
And if you remember, you can take it off of Grid View and click on the thumbtack and it'll be just that screen. You won't be able to see one another, but it should work. Emily, can you see it okay or no?
Yep, I can see it just fine.
Okay. Emily, do you want me to start? You wanna start?
Um, I can start. So this is something that we presented to staff, actually, Kim, if I remember correctly, back in November, when we really thought of our goals for the next five years overall for the entire district. This is kind of a graphic that we use just to kind of show that learning from early childhood through 12th grade, aligning with our curriculum, our SEL skills, and also those technical skills that Mick Wenzlin led this year also. We thought we'd just start with what is SEL? So it stands for Social-Emotional Learning. We took this definition right from Castle. Castle is one of the leader in research for SEL. It's also where the state of Minnesota adopted the five competencies for SEL instruction from.
Are you gonna read it? No, everybody good?
I can read it.
That's good. I guess we'll go on.
We have a little bit of why is SEL important, and here's some of the research behind it. 29% of students feel their school provides a supportive, encouraging environment. We want obviously to be higher than 29% of our students. We would like all of our students to feel that we provide a supportive environment. 83% of students who made academic gains when participated in an SEL program. So you see more gains by having SEL. 11% increase in academics from having an SEL program. Same with GPA goes up with an SEL program too, and just an overall student's attitudes and feelings towards school.
And so when we talk about Castle, this is where it's the Collaborative for Academic, Social, and Emotional Learning. That's the organization there.
Kim, you can go ahead.
Okay, so I, this is where we want to talk about the science and the research behind why do we do SEL? As you can see, the green arrow tells us kind of what we just talked about, and then the red arrow showing that there, when we talk about SEL and use this evidence in learning, we're gonna see less stress and hopefully lower drug use and fewer conduct problems. SEL is greatly linked to the adults around the children. In fact, I would say it probably has the most to do with the children. Teachers who possess social and emotional competencies are more likely to stay in the classroom longer because they're able to work effectively with those challenging students. And they are, the challenging students often cause the burnout. And then, as we know, with Mick and the flight paths, and hopefully, once all this COVID's over, we'll be back at our normal in the high school, we know that those employers are talking about, they don't need someone to know how to do the cabinet making. They need somebody who's gonna show up for work and is gonna be able to problem solve, is gonna be dependable. All those things are social-emotional competencies. And here we have the SEL approaches. This is what we, in the green is where we would look at in the classroom. I don't know if you can see my arrow here, but so when we are explicitly teaching those skills, teachers are using good practices in the academic and the organization of the building. We're gonna see these short-term outcomes, hopefully, with improved attitudes and the skill acquisition and the enhanced learning. And then the long-term outcomes, we're going to see some of this, some of the orange things. This is my, the next two slides are my favorite slides in creating this. It reminded me today about how much Red Wing Public Schools did since last September. And most of, go ahead.
Well, yeah, we got a lot done considering that we've, you know, a little in a standstill since March for some of our work, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, but mostly in a standstill. We'll get to that in a little bit. So what you have done as a board is you've hired two of us, so that's Emily and I, to do elementary and secondary strategies. You also hired an additional counselor. There are now three full-time at RWHS and two full-time at TBMS. Along with GCD, finding those Fernbrook School Link Mental Health therapists in three of the schools. The grant does not have it at Sunnyside yet. I believe that's happening next year. Karsten probably knows more about that than I do. We did have district-wide teacher professional development on all SEL competencies, E12, including individual self-assessments that we will keep and give out next year to see the growth that we've made. We did have a support staff or our paraprofessional development in February. We also incorporated the Reset-Reflect Room at Burnside and the SEL support that was given to Burnside in February. We began that REACH program at Red Wing High School back in, back with this school year, continuing that school within a school pathways ALC program. That's also through GCD at TBMS. We took the year-old climate committee and turned it into a district-wide SEL committee made up of teachers and district admin. We also worked really hard with new behavior codes along with definitions for K-12 learners. We're following the Rochester model, and I believe Karsten can tell you that, I don't know, maybe five years ago, Rochester schools went through a large OCR complaint, and they changed, they really just turned their whole discipline system on a dime, and, I mean, they were, I guess not on a dime, on a quarter, because it took them that much time to do it. So we are following their models. The bus behavior policy this year was decided to follow exactly. In the previous years, it was kind of up to an admin if they agreed with the consequence given to a kid, and then the admin would have different views. We decided this year, along with Karsten, to follow that policy exactly. And then we revised the policy adopted by the admin team, and then when the legislative committee gets to the 700s, they will talk about the revisions. We also developed district meeting norms, and we'd encourage the board to also use these norms if we could encourage you to do that. These norms came out of Rochester as well. Stay engaged, experience discomfort, which we know as Minnesotans, that's not our favorite thing to do, but it sometimes in keeping things nice, we don't get the outcome we're looking for. Speaking your truth, we use that word a lot. And this is where our teachers struggled mostly with the accepting and expecting the non-closure, because as we all know, we like to just wrap it up in a bow at the end of a meeting, but that doesn't always happen. Go ahead, Emily.
Is this from, Kim, is that from the Rochester model that?
Yeah, it came out of, Karsten might be, it's
Part of the Rochester model, but it's also from a training that Jess Whitcomb had gone to also.
It's about racial diversity training, some, shoot. I can't, I don't know, but it comes out of the racial training, racial diversity training.
I was at a meeting in the Rochester schools, and we met, and I think it was for the Southeast Service Co-op, but that was, that, there was a poster or whatever, there was a banner that had those words on it in this room, and it just struck me as exactly what needs to be done. I mean, you can't, you can't expect everything to come out rosy in your viewpoint at the end, especially when you're talking with people from different experiences and different places.
Right.
I've got, I've got more to say about it, but this whole, the whole idea behind this, respecting the individuals, from what I can tell, and it's the teachers respecting the students and in turn getting respect from the students for what they're doing. And that's what you have to do. You have to stay engaged. You have to expect discomfort, and you'll get it. Speak what you understand to be the truth, and then accept and expect non-closure to the, what you're dealing with and moving on, understanding that there are differences out there, but need to respect those differences of the individuals. It just blew me away when I saw those four phrases.
Yeah, and so we encourage this at the, so we used it as our district meeting, you know, so every time we were together as a district in the four, when I say our little dream team led by Beth Borgan, was Mick Wenzlin, myself, Emily, and Jess Whitcomb. That was, that was the dream team, as we would call ourselves previous to February 1st, because everything changed on February 1st, pre-COVID. But we did this, and then we asked our buildings to use this as well in their PLC work, and we know that, and then, of course, once we got there, then truly COVID happened. So this is something we're not gonna let go away. So, all right, Emily, you want?
Yep, sorry, Kim. These are the competencies that we mentioned earlier that come from Castle. So, and as I said, Minnesota also, the Department of Education adopted these also for Minnesota, and they've actually taken these five competencies, and there's documents that say what this looks like at every single grade level. They did like grade bands, so like K2, 3, 5, what this would look like as you're teaching that grade level. So it's self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills, and social awareness. Because if a student has all five of those, they're gonna have a really successful school career and life beyond that, because that's what we want. When they leave our district, we want them to be successful in all that they do.
And you can see the circles there, starting at that smaller level, but we're all encompassed by our family and community partnerships along with our homes and communities, and that is extremely clear right now during COVID, because we're missing that, we're semi-missing that center ring. Obviously, Castle made this before COVID. They intended that we would be in the classrooms and in the schools to help facilitate any conversations in the home.
This just kind of shows our PD plan that we did throughout the year. April 9th is obviously blocked out. We didn't meet as a district April 9th. But it just kind of shows the work that SEL did, curriculum did, and flight paths did throughout the year.
And so that goes to show you where that dream team, as we call ourselves. That's the work that we would plan each, each time we had a district professional development, because previous years, buildings were doing the development, and then we got a little discombobulated between the different buildings doing their own things. And so this year, Beth Borgan and our team brought us together so that we would all be learning and working with the same things. And then we asked at the end of those dates, we asked them for feedback, and we asked them on feedback on all four, but tonight is just about SEL. So this was the data that we got after the November training. As you can see where we were, this is E12 teachers only. Teachers only, there's about 200 teachers in the district or so. So you can see where we are. And then this was after the January 20th training, and you can see how far we went. We did do some major work in the buildings between November and January in talking about SEL. So you can see the growth that we were making. Plus, we made them give us feedback right then and there, so our numbers were better also. Go ahead, Emily.
I'm gonna talk about the Reset-Reflect Room. It was only open for a little over three weeks before we got shut down. I was one of the people setting up with, putting it together, ordering all the things. I helped run it with some EAs that time that we were open. It was only open for three weeks, but we saw amazing things from our students that accessed that room. I saw growth in that short amount of time. So the Reset-Reflect Room, you can kind of see a picture of what it looked like. It's actually, those stairs are being taken out over the summer, because you don't really need stairs in a space like that, but it'll look like that again in the fall. And it's used for students that need some work with self-regulation. And that's really the goal, is to put that positive on it. These students actually would have scheduled times. So scheduled times are that positive check-in. How's your day going? What do you need? Just to get them off and that set up well. Some kids would check in two times a day. Some kids would check in four times a day. But they'd have scheduled times, just the five-minute time. How's it going? Give them a little break to really build up. We also use it for students when they needed some time away, maybe from their classroom. They could be upset over work. They just might need to reset themselves, hence Reset-Reflect. They'd come in for their, we had reset rules. We had three steps that we'd follow to get them back, because our ultimate goal is to be successful in class. They'd go back to class with something called a Learn, Return to Learn Plan, that they'd fill out with me or an EA. And that would also communicate with the teacher what we had talked about. We kept track of all of those students. They were on charts to track how their days were going. 85% of the students in just those first three weeks were already meeting their goal every single day. So it'll continue in the fall, but that's what we know about it just from those three weeks. A lot of the tools that were used in there were things that, for calming. Often when kids are upset, they actually just don't need any language from you in that moment. They don't need to hear from you. They just need some time to themselves, and when they're ready to talk, we would talk. So we had therapy. You can see the beanbags. We had a variety of tools in there that the students could use. But we opened. Yes.
You said they're taking the stairs out of the room? Because it seems to be like having a, having a, how many kids are in the room at any time?
The most we would have in our, honestly, our really biggest busy time is around the lunch transition. A really hard transition for kids that are working on self-regulation to go from a lunchroom back to the classroom. So the max would be about 12 when we're in there. The thing about stairs is what do kids like to do on stairs? We like to run up and down the stairs.
Go up and down, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, it's, it's, it's nice to have a room that doesn't look like a classroom. And, you know, having the, it, yeah, I suppose, there's a lot of bad things that could happen, but it just seems to me a good idea to have it looking like not the classroom, to give them that in-between.
And it still doesn't look, oh, and it doesn't look super traditional. If you are in this space, some of you got to tour it too. It was almost set up like dual-sided. It's a big room. So that left side of the room was more of the reset space. You can kind of see a study carol. We had four of those in the space. And that's really for kids that need to reset. The right side of the room was really for that proactive scheduled breaks for kids. So the kids even knew there's different purposes to even two sides of the room for the different reasons you would be in there. But it doesn't to them feel like or look like a traditional classroom to them either.
I'm gonna say that, I mean, I witnessed Emily in here. Emily is by far, like, she knows. She's a godsend to this room. One day she happened to be gone, and I had to be her, and let's just say I had to work hard that day. I had to work really hard to not just have fun with the kids and realize where they were, and I followed all those things. And the kids were able to tell me a lot more than I was able to probably help with them.
Kim, I'm gonna interject in here just a minute. We're gonna use that chat box for people who have questions or comments. So Janie's got one, and then Heidi. So we'll just use the chat box, just like regular school district meetings.
I, Pam, I just wanted to let you know that I'm looking at the slideshow, so I'm not seeing any comments. So if you need to stop, please, please just ask, interject and ask me.
Okay, so Janie, go ahead.
Thanks. Kim and Emily, I just didn't know if you were gonna later in your presentation just have more data about systems that were utilizing this or more specifically, and so that's all I asked. I didn't know if you wanted to do that now or if you had that later.
Nope, that'll be a little bit later if we could.
Heidi had a question?
Here. Oh, there I am. So my question was, of the students that are accessing this room, are they identified ahead of time and that they need this kind of support? Or is it, hey, I think, how do they get access, I guess, in the building? Who identifies when these children need this type of service? And then is this described to their guardians or parents about this is what we're doing differently for your child, and this is how it's helping, and this is how you could reinforce certain things? Can you tell me about that a little bit more?
Yep, so I can answer that. It's actually available for all students. Now, the students that had scheduled breaks. There's a Reset-Reflect, sorry, I'm getting feedback. There's a Reset-Reflect permission slip. So there's contact made with all the parents for kids that have scheduled breaks, because that was part of their day, whether they're in there for two scheduled breaks or not. So parents knew that. There was permission slip that went home that explained the entire program, what it was used for, all of those things. Now, those kids were identified both by teachers and our data for those that needed a little bit more. But also, we all know that a kid can have an off day, so it wasn't closed to like everyone. It was those kids, there's 11 kids that had scheduled time, but other kids were able to use it also. That was just different. My scheduled kids could come in at any time. I didn't need to have a phone call or anything, because it was staffed all the time, and we already had our plan, and they knew what to do. The kids that might be having an off day, they just needed to call the office, and then I knew that they were coming down, because I needed to know, are we doing, what type of reset are we doing? Do they just need to talk to someone for five minutes? Do they need some quiet? Do we need to come up with a plan for going back? But we had students, both that were scheduled or obviously there, but we also had students that were not part of that core 11 that we had going, that would just need to access the room occasionally. We didn't get far enough in. One of our rules is we kept track every day of who accessed the room. We kept track of times, reason why, where they were coming from. Because eventually, we were only three weeks in, we'd start to see patterns for some students too. Like, is it always 11 o'clock when they have this special, or is it always this? The ultimate plan was, once a kid accessed it more than three times, then we'd be reaching out to the family, like we did with our ones that had the permission slip, was part of the setup of the program too. But it is available to everyone. There's just different ways to access it.
Oh, great, great explanation. Thank you.
We didn't have anyone that got to that three that we hadn't already identified. So the data was really, it's really clear. What's the, like, the one nice thing about behavior data in this regard is who is using the room? So that was really good.
No, I mean, that describes, I think we need to describe to folks, because I think we're falling into some stereotypes here. And I know you guys are working against that a little bit too. But, you know, so a child has somebody die in their family. They're normally okay, but now they've got a severe illness in the family or a death, and maybe they're gonna have a tough time for a month before they get it sorted out, kind of. And so, yeah, so you're describing different levels of services for different reasons, and that's why it's accessible to all kids, so.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me. I just, I just think we need to tell some of those sort of circumstances to help people grasp the totality of what it's meant for.
One thing that's really important in this Reset-Reflect Room in February 1st that I mentioned at Burnside is that Emily and I, before that, were coaching the teachers. We were, we were coaching. We were in their classrooms. We would be working with the teams of teachers on strategy, so it would influence, you know, the adult behavior was influencing the child behavior. Once February 1st came, then Emily no longer coached, and I no longer coached. So we saw some really big successes here, but we lost a lot of that adult, and that's only a resource thing. And just coming from your finance meeting, it's like, nothing's gonna come out of the sky, and we know that. So, so because the Reset Room was really successful, it's because we pretty much just tossed everybody at Burnside. There were some really big successes there. So, but there were losses. I'm sure Chris Palmetier and George and Mike would say, well, that's great for Burnside, but we also lost some of that support at our building. Okay, I'm gonna keep going. Is that okay, Pam? I assume.
Yep, go ahead. Just let me ask one more thing.
Oh, sure.
Holly, you had put your name up earlier. Do you want to comment or have a question?
Oh, I, yeah, I just wanted to comment that Glenn Singleton was the one behind the Courageous Conversations and his
Thank you.
And it was extremely controversial in St. Paul, so about four years, they fired him. But that was after we spent about $3 million on our account. What has stayed around though is some of that language around the Courageous Conversations and the compass and talking through your feelings and those kinds of things. But then it became also very subjective. It's good, in a sense, but to just be very cautious of it and read the research behind it.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Holly, for the Courageous Conversations. That was the training. The only thing that we have taken from the Courageous Conversation is those meeting norms.
Yes, and those people controversial, just, just around people's subjective attitudes toward them, because they aren't objective. Does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 I mean, right, we can all, we can all, you know, yeah. It's just better than pay attention, stay engaged, all those kind of, I hate, I can't stand.
I just prefer be nice.
I suppose that's, I suppose that's subjective too to somebody. Okay, I'm gonna keep going here, Pam. Is that all right?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So here are our goals for next year. This is assuming that we get to do in-person learning. So next year, at Burnside, we have two new types of classrooms starting, both something called the Arise, which I'll talk about in a moment, and CoTalk. These came directly from a group of us, including Karsten and some other people from Burnside. We visited Franklin Elementary in Rochester, where George used to be principal, in February. Arise is going to be, well, the second grade and the third grade and the fourth grade. And that really is a space for kids that just need a little bit more. And that really is a space for kids that just need a little bit more. They might need a little bit different structure to their to their day, but they just need more S D L. And it can be for a variety of reasons too. Um, arise, um, which is our working name right now is what we're working with. Um, stands for um. Achievement, no, sorry, acceptance, relationships, integrity, skills and empathy. Um, and those classes will be um, a smaller classes as I said, but really with a more heavy S D L focus. So they're still gonna get all the same academic content, but their structure of their day might be different. They'll also have more additional S D L instruction than other classrooms also. Um, co-taught is on there also just because I'm, I'm excited for this. It'll be great. Co-taught will just be co-taught um, with a special ed teacher and a regular ed teacher um, for our S D L um, students. Um, that receive um, services under learning disability. Um, so there'll be. A group of those students in that classroom along with other um, students too. Um, there'll be around twenty-four students in those classes, but they'll have for all academics, the two co-taught. Um, depending how much you know about co-taught, co-taught research behind it is really the best you can give your students. Is co-teaching a classroom. Um, another goal is a more um, stronger focus on active supervision. Um, from our teachers for our students. That'll look different across our different buildings. But teachers are gonna have more duties to be with students. Um, example I can give at Burnside is teachers will be either doing recess or lunch duty. Um, each day. Um. A big thing that I'd like to see, and this will involve a lot of conversations, is an S D L screener across our entire district. Um, we use FastBridge to screen our students for math and reading three times a year. We don't do anything right now to screen our students for S D L needs. Um, which is also hard, like even from data standpoint, we get to look at the data of after the fact. I, we can look at the referrals from students, but I can't look at their needs.
Yep, we did do act, we did do screening this year at Twin Bluff. Uh, twice because we we didn't do FastBridge three times. But Twin Bluff was the only one and the data, you know, it's our first time at the data on the S D L screener. But it didn't help when you came to Burnside or even or even uh, Red Wing High School and and Sunnyside to be able to determine that. It goes with, we do have something with our FastBridge testing. Package that does have an S D L screener in it. Whether it's the best is to be determined, but it is, it's something that we have and we don't have to pay for. So. That's a good thing.
Um, and then the last one, behavior-specific praise. It sounds really simple. Um, next couple of slides we'll go into it. Behavior-specific praise has the highest research behind it for improving students' behavior in school.
I'm gonna stop right there. Janie has a question or comment and then Heidi.
I think Kim just actually answered it, but so just to confirm, our FastBridge or whatever data system we have has. An S D L screener currently in it. It might not be what we actually want or need, but there is opportunity there, right?
Yeah.
Because if, if I remember when I was working with the Pep and Woods, the Summer Blast thing, weren't we trying to use that to help? Kind of make, see if the S D L was actually improving from Summer Blast?
Yeah, I um, I can't answer that part about the Pep and Woods part. That might have been a year or two. We just started this fall with that screener at Twin Bluff. Part of the challenge of the of, it's called My Sabers. Um, that's the name. It it depends on if it's um. Uh, if it's age appropriate.
Um, Janie, though, you are correct. They did use um, that for um, Pep and Woods for the summer program.
So it sounds though like you ladies being the experts of this think that maybe there's some better. Trackers or screeners that would be better utilized, is that I'm hearing?
I haven't uh, had any time to look beyond Sabers.
Okay, that's fine.
We just need more in-depth time with it.
Yeah, alright, thanks.
And Heidi?
So Emily, when you were talking about the screeners, um, you said you could look at referral data and not the needs. And I um, I looked through that E A B report that Carson had given us too, and it talked about how. Traditionally districts have been slow to adopt screeners because they're afraid of the labeling piece. And I must say, um, I've had personal experience with um. Documenting a child's needs and it seemed to be um, all sort of negative. I mean, it wasn't meant to be that. It was meant to identify needs, but it was always, well, they need this, they need that, they need this. And so personally, I said, you know, I'd like to attach something else to this document. Um, that says, what is it the child brings to the classroom? Because there are also assets there. So I really. Want, want um, people to look at the whole child instead of saying, oh, look at this, um. Look at this, uh. You know, paperwork that says, well, here's the needs. And that should be something that, yes, okay, that's what we have to do, but it also has to be in consideration with um. The whole child look and what what are the assets? So I just wanted to kind of make that comment and and see what you had to respond to.
I would really like one that, so a lot of them, teachers fill out for younger kids too, but I think it's important to have one that has a student component.
Yes.
And really does find the whole child. Um, because S D L doesn't just mean finding, when we say needs, um. We always think, oh, this kid can't sit still or they don't do what we want them to do in a traditional setting. But when I say needs, it might tell you that why this kid is a little bit quieter and how we can help them to feel more confident in themselves. So um, it's those those little intricacies of S D L too, because we often see the big ones. Right? They're obvious to us, but it's those small ones that I think we miss a lot of the time too, until you get to a point of. Why did this kid all of a sudden have five O D Rs? We don't know anything about this kid.
Right.
So I think it's a, I agree with the whole child. I want a component that gives us the whole child encompassing who they are. And what they need from us as a district.
Good, thank you.
And I do believe Sunnyside.
Pam, cut.
Title was also using Sabers. Um, so as you can tell, we've just got a little sprinkling of Sabers throughout the district, so hopefully that'll be our plan for the fall.
Janie? Also, sorry again. So does the S D L screener at all have an ace component into it of talking about trauma or anything?
I took it with my daughter, my fifth grade daughter, and I, no, that was so long ago. I can't.
And it's okay if you can. I just.
I think that there's a lot of times where they they talk a lot about the home, which can be an ace. And we, and we, one other thing, I keep, all this is coming back to me. Right now I've been on Burnside like Tunnel Vision. But we were meeting, Emily and I were meeting monthly with um, Megan, no, Maggie. Yeah, or Maggie.
From the county?
Yes, she's from the county. And so we were meeting in Chris Johnson to talk about some of the ace scores. So I don't think it does get specifically into ace, but it does, of course, touch on those safety factors mostly.
And I will say, Kayla's also on here. Kayla knows a lot about these screeners too. Uh, Kayla and I would also give something called the Force Choice Survey to students when they'd start to um, we'd start to notice them a little bit more. And that really just lets the us know their motivate, their type of motivation and different things like that too. But um. My Sabers gives you the student component. That's the part the student does, so.
Thank you. Moving on, Pam or? Okay, so getting into that behavior-specific praise, um.
So this here is the continuum of school-wide strategies. So it starts with um, teach behavior and routines. So that's like your whole school, um, whole classroom and down. Um. But basically, if all of these things are done in a school, you will see more appropriate student behavior. You'll see less um, referrals to the office. The big goal for all of our teachers would be behavior-specific praise. Because um, it shows the greatest research, an eighty percent improvement over behavior. If behavior-specific praise ratio is maintained. But the ratio is hard. We're gonna get to that in the next slide, what it needs to be. So behavior-specific praise is exactly what it sounds like. You tell a child what they did well very specifically with detail. Um, it builds positive sense of self, teaches new skills, allows for self-control, promotes brain development and create, creates predictability. Here's why it gets tough, not impossible. I think it's very possible to do this. You need to have a four-to-one ratio. So a student has to hear four behavior-specific praises for every one that is not. For our students that experienced trauma, that's six-to-one. Because of our current world that we're in, we're gonna be at six-to-one for pretty much everybody when we come back into the school. Um, and as it says, it can improve behavior by eighty percent just by pointing out what someone is doing correctly.
This is the one where Emily and I, um, and I know Beth, Borgan and Jess and Mick. We've all talked about our family dynamics, our little, our our family, a team of five. Um, this is the hardest one. Uh, Emily and I drove, of course, Carson has talked, and we went to St. Cloud to look at their reset ref- reflect rooms twice this year. Um, down to Rochester and Emily, I said to her, being a secondary teacher myself, to be like, what? What does that mean? Am I supposed to tell a kid every single time they're doing something right? That they're doing something right? I mean, that gets a little monotonous after a while. And then Emily would make it, um, of course Emily comes from an early childhood plus elementary viewpoint, and so she was able to change it. And then I became um, aware of that in my coaching and it was obvious about. It just, it just became more obvious, but had Emily not walked through behavior-specific praise with me, I wouldn't have had. An idea. I mean, I, you know, we we all say, good job, buddy, or nice job, you know, singing or whatever, but it's not that. It's a, so this, this by far is like a mountain that we are going to be starting our climb on. Because this doesn't come naturally, I don't think, to. Secondary teachers, I'll say. Um, and that's not to say that our five-twelve teachers don't, aren't specifically praised, but. You know, when they're doing it right, you just, you just, I don't know, you just, right, you all are doing something right, right now. Do I say, thank you Pam for sitting there quietly? It was so nice and waiting for your turn, Mike, Jake, Mike, thank you for waiting for your turn and.
But we do as their brain is developing, because it's who they are.
So that's, it it gets more difficult, right? But but this is something that the research is there. The research is there, so we know we have to, we have to get on board, even though it's tough. And we kind of talked through this about why we, why we do the behavior specific pra- or specific praise. Um, with those kids and during their brain development.
So Kim, this is Pam. I have a quick question for you. So, you know, I I'm thinking about, and maybe you're gonna get to this too. But the family component, um, and how we can support families around this. Because our kids are only getting, we only have our kids for, you know, a small amount of time in their lives. But this kind of needs to be, you know, where your circle showed us earlier, the family and the larger community too is. Playing a role in all of this.
Yeah, this is, um, this is huge and I will say that, um. In, in, in me personally, and I think Emily too. Uh, I left last school year at this time being a choir director for nineteen years and a music person and. Putting them all together and hey, hey, hippie, hippie, and I've had, you know, I think I've had every one of your children actually. Um, at some point in time. I don't know, I don't think I've had a Dirks, but I've had somebody. And to come into this in September. And how much I have learned in in the five months that I was just the coach, um, was huge. And then once I came to Burnside, February first and worked in Burnside for a month. And then after uh, the principal change, what's happened since then, it's, it's, it's huge. How much I've learned about our community and about our homes. And I've lived here. We've all lived here for so long. I thought, you know, and I, and a lot of you know, I have that church connection in town. Or connections. And I think I know things and I find out I know nothing. Every day I find I know nothing. Um, and during COVID, the amount of of uh, work that our social workers are doing is absolutely. Um, amazing. If I can, I'm gonna share a story today. Um, today, there was a young person who um, has some uh, toileting issues. And is still wears things to provide comfort to her. And she's in a, in a Google meet. And stands up and doesn't have lower pants on. So people, her class sees this, whatever. Teacher says, sit down, sit down, right? And then, then that conversation starts. Thankfully, it's a young enough group of kids that it wasn't huge. But I had to ask our social worker to call home to say, hey, can you talk to, you know, maybe the parent wasn't aware and things. And so the social worker instantly calls home, gets that family to know what's going on. But then tells me about what's going on and that 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 child's. Home is, it's nothing, I have nothing to compare it to. And I've been teaching for twenty years. And I don't even know if Emily, maybe Emily from her early childhood years would know things like this, but it's just what these kids are dealing with that don't have the. Nuclear sense at home. We're gonna have, um. We are in uncharted territory in the fall, if we come back in the fall. Um, it is, it, the social work element and Pam being a social worker, you know this, you just know. How much we don't know. We just don't, we just don't know. And I, we wanna make their lives, um, we wanna get them to learning. But we gotta make sure that they got the pants on to learn. So that's uh. That's something that we're dealing with. And and had I not been in that Burnside experience, I wouldn't have had that. Obviously, five through twelve does not talk about putting pants on. So, um, but they talk about drugs on a regular basis. They talk about sex on a regular basis. They talk about. Um, is fights on a regular basis, you know, it's just the bigger problems, bigger kids. So. Um, so anyway, that's what, that's where I got that. Doesn't make us feel any better, but it just tells us what we're, what we're really dealing with. Uh, when they come to school and if their S D L needs aren't met, we can't get to learning.
Right. Thank you, Kim.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Can I keep moving? The next part. Fair warning, is discipline. I know you guys love to talk about our discipline, but um. This is the discipline data, hard data from September until March first. So I didn't give you anything after March first. What's the hardest thing about looking at data is that we saw the trends. And we were working on it and then they had to do a hard stop. So I can't tell you that the data is gonna, you know. We're not gonna be able to compare this year's data to next year's data and things like that. Um, working, this is all a part of the data mart that works um, with uh. The work you do with Lisa Hanson with an E. And I think Carson can probably say, I think she's contracted through the district for eight hours a week, I believe at this time, Carson. Is that correct? Pretty sure.
Yeah, that's correct. She's um, scheduled to work eight hours per week. Uh, she did help us more during the COVID crisis because we had her do some special projects. Uh, but that's the general under- understanding. Uh, she is the interim director of Everhand Join. So she has multiple roles now, um, but she's doing a great job.
Good. Okay, so this is the, um, whoops. I assume you can all see my slides. So Emily and I by far worked on, eh, when we were coaching, we were working on discipline data. On a regular basis. Um, so I haven't spoken this language in a while, nor has Emily. She worked a little bit during COVID on it, but. Um. So this is our total, what we call O D R, Office Discipline Referral. Our total discipline data for Red Wing Public Schools. These are the amount of referrals. So um, when Heidi. Hmm, swears at the teacher, this is, this would be something we would write up. So here we have September. Can you see my pointer Pam or no?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so this is, yep, so this is September, October, November, December, January and February. So February, we had three hundred and forty-eight referrals and you can see almost five hundred referrals in October. This was extremely concerning. Um. And uh, we'll talk a little bit about why that happened this year. Here is our bus discipline data. And you remember back in the summer, so again, September is here. We talked about following the bus policy bar none. So there was, there was gonna be no more of the um, admin would get to decide what the policy was. Or if the kid was kicked off or whatever this, the infraction. So here we have um, about sixty in September and then we go way up there in October and November. Huge uh, jump in December. You have to remember that December only has like fifteen days of school. So there's always gonna be. So there's always gonna be a natural dip. But then January and then up in February and then of course coming to March. Not, not terribly bad, actually, the, the bus discipline data got better. All right, this is important. This is our grade level data. Our fourth graders are, is the blue. They are the highest, uh, data referral getters. We'll explain that in a little bit. Um, our second largest group is our eighth graders. This is where we, I know you've talked a lot about, um, the support that's needed at the high school in regards to eighth and ninth graders. The second grade is very concerning. These are pretty young kids to be that high. So the dichotomy between Burnside and the high school, high school eighth and ninth graders, as you can see, seventh grade is right there too. That's kind of normal. That's very normal, right? That's, they're trying to figure out who they are. We need to do some major work with the teachers of those kids because we, we gotta talk to them differently. They're in that, they, you know, let alone home things, they've got hormonal things going on. Um, but the fact that our, our fourth grader, second graders and third graders were that high was extremely scary, uh, in the sense, like what's going on over there at Burnside? Um, and kindergarten, this, um, is pretty small. I just want you to know that you gotta remember that these are twenty over here for kindergarten and then eleventh grade and then the rest. Uh, this is the location. So when we talk about active supervision, uh, you're talking about the bottom five. But, but the work that Emily and I were, that we were doing in the classroom is, is, uh, we have so much farther to go. And it's not just Emily and I, obviously it's the admin team, it's the PLCs, it's, it's the whole thing. But these things are coming from tier one behaviors in the classroom. You want that, what we'd love to see is playground and the lunchroom are the main problems because those are the unsupervised. Well, that's easy. So you can put the teachers in there and that's what we're working on at Burnside. But you can see that the classroom is where the majority of these things are happening, not in the hallway, not in the restrooms, inside the classroom. And the last slide I have for the data is the type of discipline data. So you can see, I kind of color coordinated it. Um, yeah. We are changing the word, we aren't going to have next year, discipline incident referral minor. We are not going to be calling things minor and majors anymore. We're going to be giving definitions to the types of infractions so that we can talk about, um, cause that, that in five hundred and twenty-two tells you nothing as a, as a board member. But five hundred and seven tells you a lot more. Tells you that kids aren't following the rules and, and there again, that's classroom things. Um, inappropriate physical contact with another person is a minor type behavior, but it's a younger person type behavior. So when they scuffle on the playground, um, it, that is the minor infraction. Now, when they do, um, Emily, what's the next one? Fighting serious.
Continue on, because we debated this a lot. We talked about the different violation codes. Um, so inappropriate physical contact with another person was added this year and that's the lowest level. And then you would go to physical aggression.
Oh, yeah.
Those two were added because the only things we had were fighting. Um, scuffle or serious, but that involves multiple people. We didn't have any violation code if it's one person. Cause if it's one person pushing someone, that's not a fight, the other person wasn't involved. So, um, it goes inappropriate physical contact with another person, physical aggression. We do have assault, that's your highest, highest level. Um, and then when it's multiple people, there's fighting, there's horseplay and play fighting. It's your lowest level. Um, then there's, um, fighting scuffle and fighting serious.
Yeah, so as you can, and we can, if you'd like to, as a board, talk about that. But we have, um, layered out those things. Like if, at the high schools, you remember, we had, there was a couple fights, you know, those are gonna be up there. Um, but if a kid's pushing, you know, not that we encourage up, obviously, we don't want people pushing each other on the playground. But sometimes it is just a scuffle and it's just a little like knock it off type thing.
Um, Janey has a question.
Sure.
Maybe just a comment real quick on these when you talk about, you know, more than one person being involved, involved. Like, I guess that's my main concern is that, you know, when we, I remember when we were discussing discipline at Burnside and we talked about the victims and making sure they were heard and recognized and stuff. And, um, I mean, this is just my commentary. I just feel like there's a big difference between when a child is making choices that just affect them and then when there's, they're making choices that affect, you know, other kids in the classroom. So I know that, is that kind of where you're getting some of this, you know, differentiation between the, obviously assault is, you know, that's a, a pretty strong term. But can you tell me a little bit more about where you're, kind of where I would see the differences in that? Or if you, like, if that was part of the discussion?
So when I say one person, we mean there's one offender. The system does track the victim. So if it's inappropriate physical contact with another person, we're gonna have the offender, but the victim is also in there too. Um, that's what I mean, one person involved. Obviously someone's involved because they did an inappropriate physical contact to another person. But this is the violation in our ODR system, which is synergy that the offenders are assigning.
So the victim wouldn't have that in there. I mean.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
No, so there, like, we can see who the victim was in this situation, but they don't have a violation assigned to them.
Right, right, okay. Yep, so they, the, I want you to know that the victims are not listed in this data. Uh, back in, I think it was February or March, when you as a board were talking about Burnside and talking about identifying those victims. That's, um, we, if we were identifying the victims, but we were not tracking the victims. So now we are tracking with every hand joined as well.
Okay.
Uh, I'm sorry, not every, not, I'm sorry, not every hand joined, but, um, the consulting work you're doing with I Three Works and Lisa Hanson.
Okay.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Kirsten had something that he wanted to either ask or comment on.
Uh, just a, a quick question, like if there were multiple kids involved in the same incident and they all got in trouble, let's say. Would, let's say four, four kids were involved in the same. Would that show up as one incident in this report or would it show up as four?
It would show up as four.
All right, thank you.
And then Heidi has a question.
Heidi, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, the, um, I'm glad we're having the discussion about discipline issues and how, my question though is, are we all understanding the same thing? Because we all have our implicit biases, um, we have to work to overcome those. Um, are we characterizing, you know, I can see one person going, well, hey, I sorted this out. So it's not, I don't really need to make a record of it. Um, and then another person is like, oh no, you know, this really does need to be addressed. So the big question is, are, do we have buy-in or, or common agreement on what it is all of these terms mean? Um, are we having discussions and looking at it like, you know, like one classroom may have a huge amount of referrals and you're thinking, well, what's, what's going so badly wrong there? And another classroom may have very few. I don't know, how are we looking at that type of?
Yeah, really good question. Yep. You know, it makes me feel, it makes me feel good to know that you're asking those questions and I have answers. Because we have been working on our inter-rater reliability, which is between buildings.
Yeah.
Um, and our dream team is that we keep calling, I keep calling us. We were at the admin meetings this year, so we were able to bring these things up. The admin team, and when I say admin team, we're talking about, you know, K-12. Um, they, we are all coming up and we give a thumbs up, a thumbs down, whatever, on a definition. Um, and when it comes to classrooms, this is part of, um, the evaluation process. So I and Emily can see the data and we share this data, if not weekly, monthly, with our admin teams that are in our building. So when I was at Twin Bluff or even at George's building, then I would be like, George, you gotta go to Carson's classroom because look at, I'm getting seven referrals from Carson's classroom and I've never gotten seven. And then it's up to George to talk about that. However, um, because it's an evaluative, George, or, you know, the evaluator needs to go there and see like, okay, is the classroom management in there? But we as coaches then would also be able to be in there and working simultaneously. But we as coaches are not evaluative at all.
Right.
So, so if they needed a s, kind of a gentle push, that was more of us. If they needed a hard stop, that would be the admin team. But I want you to know that as a board, the, the Beth and, um, Beth is, is certainly vital to this whole thing. Carson, Carson let us do our job and then we'd all bring it up to Carson and then Carson would bring it to you. But Beth would, would kind of rally the people like, this is what we gotta do. And everybody got on board and so we, Beth was here and we were down here and the admin team was in the middle. And we were able to come, um, and do some great work, I feel, before February first, for sure.
I, I, yeah, I just, I think it's the system's approach, um, and that we all need to kind of, um, and it sounds like that's what you're working on is building that common agreement. And then how do we assess, you know, how do we assessing what's going on? And then how do we address it? Because I think a lot of this is less about students and it's more about the adults. You know, how are we agreeing about what to do? Being really cognizant of, I think, what Mike started way early in the conversation tonight was, you know, people's differences.
Yeah.
Um, and understanding kind of where that kid was coming from and responding in an appropriate manner.
I will say that, um, I'm glad you brought up that implicit bias, um, because I think we all check that or we all talk about it. Uh, that is something that, uh, Principal Board Nero, uh, really hit home, um, about, uh, seeing it, uh, the word defiance, for instance.
Right.
The, 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 um, defiance looks different to, um, a white student than it does to a Native American student, than it does to a black student, than it does to Hispanics. I mean, so we talked about what does defiance truly look like? And so we were, and that's where Rochester with their OCR complaint had to take so much of that out. Um, George, George certainly would, um, George would be able to speak to that because I think George was actually, maybe Carson can answer that. Uh, I think George was there during their OCR work. I would, I, I think that if we ever got to that part, we'd be able to, um, you know, rally around what George was.
Yeah, George was a principal in Rochester for eight or nine years. And so he lived through it, you know, before the OCR complaint and after the OCR complaint. Um, so yeah, he's well versed in that.
Great, thank you. Um, Jim had a question or comment and then Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Kim, can you go back to the previous slide, please?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. I, I'm just like, wow, that's, this is, this is interesting. Not that I'm interested to see what's all been done, but you have so many categories. Couple there I don't understand. I'm not asking for explanation, asking for explanation. It's one is see documentation down about eight lines.
Thank you. Bring that up. That's important that we bring that up. Yeah, I'll keep that, I'll keep that.
All right, it's good. You keep it. I'll see if I can try to make you forget it, but if I ramble on, you're on here. Um, question, just that, uh, what, what I find is, uh, you know, this is through March basically fifteenth or twelfth or whatever, so you're falling, you know, two and a half months shy. So I just, I'd be alarmed at the numbers for the first so many months and not with the full year. Um, a couple of them, I just, you know, leaving class without permission. Just, I just don't see, I just can't fathom that. Uh, the cell phone is still there. My other, my point is, I'll let you talk here. Uh, question is, is this, and I had to step away before you may have said it. Is this, this is district wide. Have you broken it down by schools?
Yes, all of this is, is done by schools. That, I just, I just did it for you guys, but that's what I would share with her, um, with all of our admin. We were in admin teams every, every week. Um, so Chris and Jen and George and Jay at, on my side. And then, um, it, Jim, those numbers were extremely alarming in the fall. Um, we, and that's, um, poor Emily. Emily was supporting Burnside and, and Sunnyside. And I was supporting Twin Bluff in the high school. And I would say, Emily, what is going on over at Burnside? What's going on? And Emily'd be like, this is, and so anyway, um, those, those were alarming and then we'd bring that and, and you see those numbers and it is jarring. And that's where we were hoping and we did jar those, those, the admin level to make some changes. You've got to change some things. We also though, with that, did a lot more, um, document. Like we were, uh, more truthful to the ODR process. Uh, before this, like somebody, I don't know, somebody leaves class, they weren't writing that up. So now we needed to write that up. That needs to be written up so we can see the trends over the years, pre-COVID.
Um, Kim, before I forget too, so one thing in the system, the five hundred and twenty-two minors, you can almost subtract that out because those would have another violation attached to them. So it's not, so if you take that out, um, those are already, that five hundred and twenty-two is already in another violation code. Cause the minor and the major and the unknown, um, duplicated sometimes. I've been working on taking those out for the buildings. It just takes a while. Um, I will say we still have more work to do. Our buildings still don't all do this the same. Um, Burnside started the year being told, put in everything. And, you know, some people that you're rule followers, put in everything. We have more work to do of like, this is something that needs to go in the system, this doesn't. Um, Jim, I can answer your question, left class without permission. That is actually a big thing at elementary school. So they get upset and they reach the point of, and I can't think of the brain part of it right now, but it's a certain part of your brain and you only have fight, flight or freeze.
Limbic system.
Thank you, the limbic system. So when you're little and you get to that point and you don't have your language anymore, you're gonna fight, you're gonna flight or you're gonna freeze. A lot of young kids will do flight. They will leave, so that actually I don't have it by building, but I'm gonna say the majority of those are gonna be your elementary students.
Sure.
Yeah, there's a good number in the high school that leave class without permission, but they usually share some words before they do. The elementary kids generally just get up and go. However, that was something that we, I know that I worked really hard on. Like when I got to Burnside, I was like, what, we don't do this here? At the high school, your, your people that leave classroom without permission have, that's like, if that's the only thing they do of the day, you'd be so happy because they also have this much underneath it.
And we had kids in the reset room. That was our first goal to start with. I'm like, I don't need to meet your chart goal. When you feel the need to flee or leave your room, I need you to come here. And we had a couple of kids in the, that's what they worked out. I was like, thank, well, you landed here. We're not in the hallway for an hour. You landed where you need to land. So that's one of the things we started with some of our kids right away. When you get that feeling, I won't even talk to you, but I need you in this space, we need safe. But you need to come here, but you need to let them know where you're going. So that's what works on some of my kids and they'd just be like, I'm going to reset room. And they come in and they flop down. I'm like, let me know if you wanna talk.
Yeah, so Emily would, Emily was great at the kid part. And then I, my job at the secondary level is to say, and you as a teacher, do not ask them. If they are saying, I'm going to so-and-so's room, to engage them back was a big old fight. So if the kid was telling us where they were going, all it was, was a phone call to say so-and-so's on their way. Um, because safety is such a big deal. But in the elementary, they were getting, the elementary teachers were faster at that. They didn't engage the kids as much.
Sure.
Uh, but the high school kids certainly did, but.
So see that, see documentation.
That is for our students that receive special education services.
Okay.
Yes, so in January, we started to say, okay, um, uh, uh, we, we were just, we were not being able to separate those that had a confirmed disability because they would, it, the data would look the same as a kid that didn't have a confirmed disability. But we needed to be able to say, okay, is this really leaving without permission? Is this really just special ed kids or is this general ed kids too? So what we were able to do in January as the admin team was, we have to be able to do it separately. See documentation is all kids on an IEP that the behavior was related to their disability. So as you can see, see documentation, that's only from January. And that's, so it's a significant amount.
Wow.
Um, that changed. And it was January twenty-first. It was January twenty-first, so it's like, um, six weeks of data. So we could say, um, okay, we're having a harder, we need to reach those BIPS or, uh, BIPS, I'm sorry, uh, behavior intervention plans, or we need to go back and look at their IEP goals. Are we setting them up? So we needed to get through this data. We needed to get down and dirty with it.
Uh, anything else, Jim? Otherwise I'll turn it over to Mike for his question.
I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, I just, I wrote it that in the sidebar thing that uh frequently the the people who get caught uh physically aggressing another person have been aggressed against first. And it happens all the time where where the action happens and you see it. You know something's going on, you turn and look and you see the retaliation rather than the initiation. Um, I suppose you just try to sort it out with uh uh by talking to the individuals involved. But uh frequently, it's it's somebody defending themselves who ends up getting getting the uh
Yeah, most of the time. Yeah, so um, let's say it's a frequent flyer and and a kid that's a non-frequent flyer. But the adult only saw the non, the adult would write up the non. What what uh are? Okay. Carson, did you always, maybe I'm the tornado, maybe that's. Uh, anyway, in the investigative process though, Mike, that's where your student um support coordinators and your assistant principals go into that and go, okay, tell me more about whatever happened. And usually you find out, oh, well, maybe he said something. But the same thing could be true, that that's the part where the implicit bias comes out. Because you assume the frequent flyer maybe said something to the non-frequent, or sometimes it is the non-frequent. So you just, you really have to get to know those kids, it's all about relationships. Emily and I would would attest to that with the reset room. We would know when they were kind of lying or when they were kind of stretching the truth. But they are, that's one thing about kids that are frequent flyers, they'll, they're pretty honest when you get that relationship with them.
And Mike, once an ODR is put in, um, that then the admin team can investigate it because they can see it in the synergy system. And then changes can be made um that are necessary. So if that, what was originally put in wasn't true, that can be changed, the students can be um changed too. So once it's put in by a teacher, it's not final, it'll go through the investigation. Cause admin have to assign a disposition code to every one of these. So they do have to read them and investigate them before a disposition code can be assigned.
Okay, yeah, I'm sure it's 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 an amazing list, I'll tell you that.
It is.
All right, thank you. Oh, and then can you just tell us what an ODR is? Say it in words.
Office Discipline Referral.
Okay, thank you.
So Pam, this is my last slide, just um for talking about the SEL as a whole. I mean, when you're talking about data, data can just use, can, I mean, discipline. Discipline can take you down a whole bunch of uh levels and you can often end up being really low. So the SEL, of course, is to bring back doing that, doing that limbic system training, uh constantly talking about the limbic system and what people's triggers are, what kids' triggers are. Um, you know, what are we gonna know now after COVID? We we won't know. I mean, obviously during COVID, you're hearing that probably the most from the national news and the state news. How are these kids gonna be? We don't really know what we're gonna be dealing with. Um, but these are some of the questions that I'd I'd love to hear from you guys so that we can also know. Are there pieces that we're missing? Is there, you know, something that you want Carson to kind of do? We also have to talk about resources. So one of the main things about this is about resources. So Emily and I were able to do things that Carson couldn't, his team could not have done. They could only be reactive. And Emily and I were able to come in and be, and that team of Mick and Jess, we were able to come in and be proactive because we weren't tied down to something. And then we were able to lift up the building admin. So if the resources, you know, obviously, if you ask any teacher, they'll say, we need more, 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 more. And Kim is not a more, more, more giver. Uh, but if we can do this smart, like with the um, for instance, the active supervision at Burnside and at the high school for next year. That's, that's amazing. What you're gonna see is much less referrals from playgrounds. You're gonna see much less bullying, even in the, even in the weeks that Carson was at Burnside after the principal shakeup. I mean, Carson was dealing with lots of parent phone calls about my kid got picked on on the playground and my kid. Right, I mean, so we're gonna see less of that. Cause we're gonna have good, we're gonna have some pretty um active supervision. That's our presentation. I think, unless you have more to go with.
Heidi has a question, what does the future look like? Yeah, and then Janie's got something. Go ahead, Heidi.
Here I am with a microphone on. Um, so all of this, as Kim, as you pointed out, was, you know, kind of came to a halt in March. So I'm wondering, um, from what I'm hearing, um, in-person start uh is going to be a a reach, I think, from the state, I don't know. But what I'm hearing now is that we either um are continuing distance learning or we're going to do a hybrid. And um, have you considered how are we reaching students and families in that type of context? And maybe that's a whole other conversation because we don't know. But I guess, I guess I'm just wondering, what are the student needs out there? I have heard that, you know, some kids are doing better at home. Other kids still have the same issues, they're just at home now. Um, and it's a struggle for parents to manage some things. Um, so I guess I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts moving ahead?
Yeah, um, thank you for asking that. Uh, as as you know, as a board, uh looking towards the future. Uh, last week at Burnside, we did the at um, and Kevin did this with all, Kevin Johnson did this with all the buildings. We did our social distancing plan. And we're not even able to get half, like even if we did a hybrid, we aren't able to get a half of a class um in a classroom, so it can't have like an A day and a B day because we still are gonna need a C day, if you will. Um, and then what, anyway, we have some, nobody knows. But for the future, we know that, and I'm hoping, and I think this will happen at the state level at least, is that they pull back a little bit on that um uh achievement testing, on the state testing. Because if we could, if we can pull back slightly on the push of March, meaning March was always our MCAs or eight, you know, April first is is MCAs. So like, for instance, at Burnside, it's go time from September first until until April first. It would be nice if the, if the state and the federal government could kind of let us be uh community members, families, I mean, let us just wrap each other with grace and and get to that individual need. Um, at the very beginning of this, Emily and Kayla, Kayla Bell, um, I had made these relationships with kids at Burnside in the, in the five weeks I was there. And I just was like, oh, what are they gonna do? They're gonna die practically. And Emily and Kayla said, no, Kim, you're you're wrong because our kids that are, we call them the reset kids. Um, our reset kids are most prepared for this. Cause they live in chaos all day long. Their whole lives are chaos. The kids that are gonna struggle the most are your kids. And I bet every one of us, Janie probably could attest and Pam could attest, you know? We're not, our kids are used to a different routine. Those kids were like, hey, I go to school, I go home and I'm not gonna expect anything different. I do feel like the families that we're gonna, I think, I mean, I think kids that come from nuclear families will will transition fine back to class because their needs are still met and they're still being loved and cared on. I think I'm most concerned about those that have lost their jobs. And the stress of finances that come with that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that are middle level kids or maybe, you know, if you think of the reset kids here, maybe this one, right? These kids. Um, what are we gonna be able to do for them? What are, you know, are they gonna always be in a state, a heightened state of anxiety? Um, what is testing gonna come in? Because testing already gets our kids anxious.
Um.
I don't know.
What Kim said too, so when we go to um distance learning two point O or whatever it calls in the fall, whatever fall brings us. Um, I would like to see a greater emphasis on SEL through distance learning to make it equal, an equal priority to academics. Um, my goal for kids is that they always feel they belong and the school cares about them. And there's a way that we can do that even through distance learning. There's a lot of online things that are available, but I would like to see that component throughout the district for distance learning to be as equal to the academic component. Um, since all of our kids right now are living collective trauma. It's not like adults too, everybody's living that. So I would like to see that as an equal part of distance learning two point O in the fall.
I agree, I really like that approach, that's what I think is needed too.
Um, and and to be clear, on those, on those surveys, and we didn't talk about that, those surveys that each building sent out during distance learning. Um, the feedback that I know that we were getting in the four was, you know, things are good, like we're, we're doing okay. But my kid, my, my child needs to see their teacher. So um, Emily, like Emily said, distance learning two point O, it's gonna be a whole lot different than what we just did for seven weeks. Or nine weeks, twelve weeks, however many weeks it's been. Um, it's gonna be very different in the fall. And as a school board, it's really difficult for us, I would think, it's difficult for you to let the learning, the 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 ABCs to go. Um, you know, we as society find it hard to let the ABCs go. But as we know, it we we're just, it's gonna be very, very different. And then I know that we've worked really hard to find the right teacher mix for our students and in retaining those teachers that are relationship based. Um, you've had some really difficult decisions lately about talking about relationships and students. And and like, that's a number one. It's, and I think all of you um could say that um through your professional work, you know who cares for you and who doesn't. And a, and a kid in trauma can call you out faster than anyone, they don't like people that aren't genuine.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um, we had some parents that, oh, I will, Sonia Smith, don't ever let her go aboard, whatever you do. Keep Sonia Smith, whatever you do. Um, she was dealing with a student that was gonna go to River Bluff. And this student had kind of uh opened Burnside up. And the parents said, I'm sick of you all just talking around me, just tell me the truth. And so it was again, that speak of, people don't want us to to flower anymore. They just wanna say, what do you need? And I'm just gonna tell it to you straight. Um, I, and I, that's one of Kim Corey's blessings and curses, I think. That I do tell it straight and sometimes speaking my truth might get me in trouble. But people are looking for genuine care right now. And we know that of the students as well.
Right, right, I agree. Um, just one more comment, and I I know other people probably wanna say something. Um, when you ask, what do we need at Red Wing Public Schools? I I think um, or what's missing? I think we do, and I think you guys are knee deep in this work about sort of the relearning about how to look at the student. Um, rethinking, how do we respond to the student? Uh, rethinking from a systems perspective, how we track what we're doing and what is it telling us? And and tracking that improvement, hopefully, that we've seen some of. Um, but I think we need a reset on attitude for a lot, and it's not probably frontline folks, but I think it's community wide. I find us kind of getting stuck in old ways of looking at things. Um, and and we kind of have these default settings that maybe we were raised with or we just always assumed was was what was real because we were mostly a white, middle-class um uh staff and a white, middle-class board. And we really need to respond to needs that are different. And of course, early in my tenure as a board member, it was like, oh, there was the two thousand eight recession and then here's the fallout and we're still experiencing that later with lo- lower income folks. What does it need, mean for them? What does it mean for traumatized kids and what does that look like? So I'm really glad we're really diving into this. But I still think we have a lot of work to do and 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 I'm really glad we had this conversation tonight. So, thank you.
Yeah, I am, I say this often as um a a person that's committed to Red Wing. I'm committed to living, I mean, I live here. I'm I'm in the community in different, in different organizations. I get a little frustrated um at times because we do really well um west of Liberties. We don't do so well east of Liberties in the sense of celebrating what we all have and where, what our our realities are. Um, I think Cobble does a nice job because they're, of course, being, being a presence in the east end is important. Um, just as much as Burnside's important out on the west end. And I think it's north and south, I don't know if it's that darn river at that point. But um, I I get a little frustrated when we think only in one way. Um, uh, I know a lot of you, you know exactly what Heidi's talking about and what we're dealing with and and how important it is. I will say that I got uh an email today from someone who's working on their dissertation for a doctorate as a uh doctorate of education, uh reaching out um to interview us about the Native American uh graduation rates. And why Red Wing has such a large Native American graduation rates. And we know that there's different contributing factors there. But there are people in the state that look at us and say, wait a minute, little Red Wing's got a little something going on. So I I think that's a great celebration of our diversity just in that, reaching out to us, finding out what's what's working so well in Red Wing. Um, we know that we have wonderful things in the Hispanic outreach. We are missing desperately a hole in the African-American community.
Yep.
Um, and hopefully, uh, we have a few people I know in the community that are are attempting or trying to get that started. But there again, we we need to come through some of that historical trauma and what schools have done. And of course, with the news coming out of Minneapolis, I mean, we've got, we've got some work to do.
Right.
And so I would love to recruit and uh we have some, we're, we're working great, I think, um, with having teachers of color or trying to get more, I mean, Red Wing is what it is. We're gonna get what we get sometimes, but um in regards to teachers. But uh, we're gonna work our darndest to um represent in the teaching staff what we are having in our, in our students.
Mm-hmm, thank you, Kim and Emily.
Janie has a comment or question.
Awesome, well, I just thank you, um, Kim and Emily and everybody else that helped. I think this was a really uh fantastic presentation. Um, I just had a couple of comments. One, I love how many times you use like research-driven, both of you. Because I, that's what we should be doing. Um, but and I'll finish my comments quick. But I also wanted to hear about how, you know, when we had our special education kind of eval, we talked about how the whole MTSS thing, um, you know, we don't do such a good job possibly in Red Wing. And I know that we've been talking about that for many, like, decade. And so I don't know if that corresponds to behavior, but I just wanted to do that. And then my last two were about, um, you know, I I still feel like not having PACs and different things in our schools is almost becoming, you know, a hard thing for us. Cause we're, we're losing that family connection and I'd love to like figure out ways that we can make sure. And I think we've touched on that about building trust between families and schools. But I I still think that that's something that we really need to do a lot of work on. Um, and then my last thing was, um, many of you know, I've been working on that uh policy work with the ACES and incarcerated parents um research. And so I know what I'm hearing, what we're hearing in my research group across the state is that teachers need more training about like trauma and ACES. And I just was wondering how much we're gonna do for staff development, maybe um directed at that. Cause I know there's even some accreditation programs now where teachers are getting, um, you know, actually um accredited in trauma um work. And I know there's trauma-informed schools and such, so I just want, I'll leave it at that. But I know that's a lot to throw at you, but.
Yeah. I will talk.
Okay, go ahead, Kim.
No, go ahead, Emily.
So we've talked about training for teachers, we'll obviously need to be a little bit more creative next year. Um, we don't know, like the availability of bringing in people. Um, one thing that we've looked at, and I don't know if anyone has heard of it. Um, and this is an idea we had brought up um the other week, is Stanford Harmony. Um, and I don't know if you know anything about Stanford Harmony. But um, they have um SEL instruction, but they also have their own called, it's Stanford Harmony Inspire. And it is modules for SEL for teachers. So um, the one great thing about it too, um, anybody can access it. It's actually a completely free um training because it was um funded by somebody with the last name Stanford, I I can look into it. But they do touch on online modules for trauma-informed practices and all of those. So that's one thing, um, too, I agree, we need training. We'll have to be creative, as I said, is how we do it. Because who knows when we can all, you know, gather in the hall of the high school to train everybody together or to bring anybody in. But um, I agree, the foundation is training and being able to have perspective and understanding of how we help our students by first knowing who we are as adults, as we're teachers too, and what we take to the table as we teach our students. and what we take to the table as we teach our students.
Thank you. And I think Kim just left.
Uh, still be back.
Yeah. Arlen, you had a question or a comment?
Uh, just, uh, I've been pretty silent here in a comment. And I just want to thank everybody for this presentation. Uh, it's good to see the effort that's being put into all these different areas. Um, as we all know, it's difficult at this time. And touching on things going forward, one thing we all have to remember is kids have to know that they can trust the adults that they are working with and get to know them any way they can. Um, if we are looking at, um, just one second here. Don't have that look here. Um, I'm not sure how we're going to go about things going this fall, how people can relate and get to know somebody new. Um, you know, going into distance learning here, we had teachers that students met in person prior to distance learning. I hope we've come up with a way to let our children, our students, uh, connect with our teachers personally, be it six feet apart or whatever, just to get to know them going in this fall. If we are doing some form of a distance learning or occasional or whatever. But I, it's essential that our children get a chance to get to know and hopefully trust the people that are going to be working with them. And I think this is what this whole plan we have here is we're establishing consequences that are consistent to everybody. And I, I believe that's what I'm hearing out of this. We're looking at, um, how we're going to treat everybody equally going through all this, how we're going to respond if you do this. We want to praise our students on the good things they're doing. That's, that's so key. What I heard today is tell the students the good things they're doing. That gives that connection. Hey, they're not just there ratting on me because I'm a bad person. They're saying, you're a good person. You do all these wonderful things. And then let's build on that as we go forward. And I, I really liked that part of today's presentation. That's, uh, saying four or six good things for one negative. Negativity gets you nowhere. Positive is what gets our kids here. So thank you.
Yeah, Arlen, you are, um, speaking about, um, i- i- it comes from a place of, of, uh, you being on the board for as long as you've been, you've seen that, you know, you know, how we used to all spank our kids, remember? Any of you spanked as a kid? I know I was, if you can believe it. Um, um, but I don't spank my kids. And I'm not, I'm not a, like a whatever goes kind of person. But you know, we just learned that, you know, hitting them isn't going to, isn't going to fix when they're mouthy. You know, that just, it just instills fear. Um, it doesn't work. Uh, so thank you for that. Emily has worked really hard on that. And, and we will, it's going to take us a while, but we're going to get there. Um, Janie, I wanted to get back to your, your, um, question about, you know, ACES. We did have, worked with Danielle Tease, you know, for last year, we had Danielle, not this past year, but the 18, 19. We did have Danielle Tease come in and started that trauma-informed teaching. We also, um, know that ACES training is super important, but it's important that we don't test our kids on ACES. Um, it's, ACES is about the adults, right? ACES is about, is about identifying how do we work in that trauma? So we are, we are always thinking of ACES as adults, but we don't want to have our children using that language. Um, and the other thing, mentioning the MTSS process is broken. A- a- as you all know, they're, um, you, you, you know, you had your last workshop on, uh, the one thing that, that Red Wing really needs and, and Carson, we just talked, and funny because Carson and I and a couple of others just talked about this because we're getting mixed messages of, of, of what part of MTSS is GCD and what part of it is RWPS? And who are we supposed to listen to? And it's, you know, like, I think Carson and Sheri are trying to speak the same thing. And, um, but then they say it, but then the people below them have to say the same thing, you know? So they're not, Carson and Sheri aren't in all those MTSS meetings. Um, so that is a process that must be fixed in order to, um, to fix that special ed piece. However, MTSS isn't having a huge, um, change on our data. It just is a, a piece of the puzzle. So it's, it's, it's a small piece. Um, it's probably more for just, I, I mean, we can get into that a separate day. But doesn't have a huge influence over the, uh, discipline data. But then talking about the PACs, PBIS, one of the thing about PBIS is, is that parent-community piece. And every, in, I was a part of the twin bluff from the start, all the way, you know, years. And the piece that we struggled with every time was the community piece. Because you have to rely on other people to do that. And it's, it's asking someone to, you know, but then you also can't just have a bunch of middle-class moms. You need to have working dads and you need to have, um, you know, a representation of your student population. So it's, it's hard. And I think that once we get that African-American community piece that we're missing, then, because we can have, we can go to our Native American liaisons and our Hispanic, um, outreach people, but we're missing that piece. And so once, that's a vital role. Like if, if that was a priority for me, if I wasn't a middle-class white woman, this would be a lot easier. Um, but trying to reach that out, and I, and I don't always say, and that's where Holly probably is going to be able to bring a lot to the board because of her work in St. Paul. Um, how to, how to speak without, y- y- you all know what I'm talking about. It's hard. I, I don't know what I'm supposed to say, you know? What am I, so, yeah.
Yep. Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, we have about, uh, 15 more minutes left. Um, any other questions? I do have one myself. Um, Emily, you talked about, um, wanting to incorporate more, um, SCL curriculum into some of the distance learning and, um, trying to, to get more going with that. Is, are you as coaches, you and Kim, going to be working with the teachers now that you're getting back to coaching? Are we going to work together with the teachers on, um, incorporating some of that moving forward?
Uh, yeah, we'd work with them, but that also would come from the curriculum department too. Um, I can tell you that the new curriculum, um, Wonders 2020 K5, it integrates SCL into the curriculum too. Um, I'm not saying that we wouldn't need more because of our current situation too. But that would be something I'd like to see, um, and I honestly would like to be probably more universal. So there's different ways, obviously, for more, um, SCL for, um, distance learning 2.0. Part of it is that we're relationship. So that obviously is not going to be scripted. We don't script how we build the relationships with our students. But there is, um, the instruction part of it too, that could be through coaching, but also with the curriculum decision too, um, that we could be using too. There's actually a lot of resources out there that have been developed with the current COVID-19 of how to do SCL and give those, um, kids what they need while we're all in this experience through distance learning too.
Yeah, and Emily is, is, can you hear, like, you're all frozen, so hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you.
Um, um, Emily and Jane Wassink, our school social worker at Burnside, uh, at the very beginning of this, uh, were making a whole bunch of strategy videos on how to breathe and, and, you know, it's stuff that, that we as adults already know how to do. We know that when we get pulled over by Jim Bryant, when he's a police officer, that we should probably just take a deep breath, be calm. But that's something that we know. My husband, I'm going to tell you, my husband had some severe trauma as a child and his limbic system is like that. Today, he got pulled over because he didn't have his registration on his boat. It was in the truck, but it wasn't in the boat. And the, the person wasn't very nice in how he asked for the registration. So what does my husband do? He tries to be calm, but what, he comes home and he's like, "Brrr, gonna," you know, it, it, and I just said, there goes that alarm system again, honey. Your alarm system is constantly like fight or flight. Scott Corey's going to fight you. Um, so, I mean, Jim can tell you many stories of people's limbic systems going off. So that's, it's important.
We don't have that much time.
But it's really important that we tell our kids now, um, you know, the next time, one thing that we really are going to know about COVID is the next time the flu season comes around. Right? Or, or, you know, it's not COVID, it's just the flu. How scared some of those kids. At the beginning of this, my daughter had a, had a fever and she wasn't COVID. She cried on the couch because she thought she was going to infect everyone. Because, and she's fine, she's normal. She's not a kid that's got, I mean, she's as normal as they can be, I guess. She was so scared that she had gotten grandpa and grandma sick. So just those things, like, we're going to be dealing with people and we're going to have to talk about those, those things. And so Emily is a great example of how do I do this? One thing that we are missing is probably what we're doing for our high school and our middle school kids. Um, the elementary kids are, are slightly, they're very different. Um, and I haven't, um, I can't really speak to George and, and Chris's building right now. I, I, I don't know. I do know that they're working hard to keep things light and positive. So.
Emily and Kim, this is Jim, and I just want to thank you for presenting tonight. Uh, kind of opened my eyes as to what we're going through. We, we talked about Burnside and we've talked about the backpack problem, the cell phone, all those things that are all accumulated into that. But no, it's a very nice job. I crammed a lot of information in the timeframe that you had here. So, yeah, thank you for, uh, spending time with us tonight.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I, I too would like to jump in and thank, um, Emily and Kim, not just for their presentation tonight, but for their work, uh, since last summer. I mean, uh, it's just amazing how much work has been done since September, um, especially with the COVID-shortened school year. And, uh, they've done some really good work. And my, uh, my hope, uh, for next year is to continue the course and finish up our plans to, um, hire the right people and to give them the resources they need. And I think we're on the right path.
Yeah, one thing I will say is that you got to have key people in key roles. Um, Carson's leadership style is, is, as you all know, is, is pretty, um, kind of calm. So there are times where Emily and I are like ready to go, you need to fix this, Carson. You need to fix this. And then Carson will be calm and just kind of see it as a, as a whole picture. And then we come down and we have Beth Borgan, who does a great job of, of celebrating us and then reminding us of these rules and that rule and the admin team that we've got. And, and I feel like pre-COVID, we had teachers with us. And that, that alone, that alone was probably the greatest success of the entire year. And Emily would probably agree with that. We were getting teachers, teachers that you would never think cared two cents about how a child feels, just what they learn. Um, to see that change was the, the, is the A number one. I want a front page story on just that.
That's just really fantastic to hear and, um, it gives me a lot of pride, I think, in knowing how hard this team is working and has worked to get us to where we are. And also thank you to the, the citizens of Red Wing for, you know,
Yes.
um, giving us the referendum dollars that we can put towards the SCL, um, vision that we've had. And thank you for carrying that out because.
I will say that we've gotten a lot of requests to go talk to the organizations in town. And we have gotten a lot of positive, and we kind of tell them the same thing we're telling you. Of course, during the Burnside kind of drama of January, that's all they wanted to talk about. But, um, we were able to talk about that there's, it's more than just one person. This, this was a, this is a systemic thing that we just got to talk about in Red Wing. We got to talk about the whole Red Wing. So, yeah. And thank you to the board, because you guys have been really supportive of the work that we're doing and, um, asking us for feedback. We're happy to share data with you as often as you want it.
I think that would be really great, um, to make sure that you get on our agenda at least twice a year, maybe quarterly to give us an update on, you know, I, those graphs, I think, are, are super helpful to give us a really good overall picture of, you know, where we were. Um, what, where, you know, where we're headed. It's been really great to hear the interventions that have been taking place um, in all the different strategies that we are enacting. So kudos and hats off to all of you for making that work and keep it, keep up that good work. And, um, yeah, if we can make sure we get you on the agenda for regular updates. I think, uh, it's been eye-opening and really educational for all of us tonight. So thank you.
I really like your board workshops because I feel like we can,
Thank you.
we can interact with you and get a lot of these questions that I know that you have during board, regular board meetings that you'd love to take time to talk about. Um, we're always, these, it was a great decision you guys went through this year to go to these board workshops. Really good.
Completely agree. All right. Any last comments or questions for Ms. Corey or Ms. Seifelt? Okay, seeing none? Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I have one.
Oh.
Carson said that he'd buy us blizzards if we did a good job tonight. So Carson, I would like, uh, cookies and cream Blizzard 2290 Brooks Avenue.
Well, I'll tell you what.
I'll take one too.
They're on their way.
Mine too.
They're coming.
But mine's not at Kim's house. Mine's a different location. Just everybody knows that.
And probably a different beverage.
All right. So just a reminder then, um, our next, our next, uh, board workshop will be at the end of June on the 29th. We're going to be going over our, um, self-evaluation. If you haven't finished your self-evaluation, please make sure to get that done. Um, you know, hopefully by the end of tomorrow night would be great. I know we're running late now. So, um, if you could get that finished, then we can start tabulating that. And that'll be a great next conversation for all of us.
And by the way, um, I think, uh, we may want to carve out some time in July. I'm not sure when. But to have an extra workshop to talk about distance learning possibilities for the fall. So, hate to bring that up, but I think we better keep it on our radar.
I think so too. Should we look at a date for July? Usually we're meeting on the fourth Monday, which would be the 27th of July?
I think that'd be a good one if, if people are able to attend, uh, because hopefully we'll have guidance from the state and some tentative plans and we'll have a good discussion.
All right. Well, uh, why don't we pencil that in as a date for the future?
Kim, can I also ask, do we have any plans, um, next week? Are we still planning on doing the, uh, virtual meetings? I know today you said there was, are we just waiting on guidance from MSBA? Or I guess who is going to make the decision? Do we know?
Well, right now, right now, the June 1st is scheduled to be virtual. Um, and I, I think we may, would need to have a board action if we wanted to move away from that. I would just stress caution because we'll have more than 10 people in the room at the same time. And, you know, there have been some incidents even in Minnesota where gatherings of school people have caused some issues. So, uh, but maybe we can discuss that on June 1st.
Yep.
Let's add that to the agenda. Okay. Anything else? Then I would, Mike, did you have something? Nope, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, who is that? Was that you, Jim?
Done.
Could be.
Mike made it.
And Kim and, and Emily, it was really a great presentation.
I'll second, I guess, yeah. What was the date before we adjourned? What was the date you talked about in July? I missed that. I apologize.
The 20th. 9th.
In July, 27?
7th. I'm sorry. The last Monday.
Thank you.
27th, sorry. Yep. All right. So motions to adjourn, um, roll call. Mike? Heidi?
Hi.
Uh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, Jim?
Hi.
Arlen?
Hi.
Holly?
I think Holly got kicked out of the meeting.
Okay. Janie?
Hi.
And Sheri, both side. We are adjourned at 7:55 PM.
Thanks, everyone.
Great meeting, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Have a good night.
Bye.